Steve Jenkins, 1163 Bradbury Road. I want to thank you for coming out to the scene and making comments on the county attorney. I'd like to see a county attorney who's competent, honest, one with extreme integrity, one with a desire to make good law-based decisions, and one who will give good guidance to the board, even when it isn't what the board wants to hear. I'd like to see our new county attorney, quite honestly, be a duplicate of our current county attorney. It may surprise you, it may not. It seemed to me that until you requested the audit of the pay and comp plan, you were happy with this guidance all the way back to 2013. So let's say you bring in another attorney, one who is competent and honest, one with extreme integrity, one with a desire to make good law-based decisions, and one who will give good guidance to the board, even if it isn't what the board wants to hear. What then? What will the board do when the new attorney provides a report that the majority of the board doesn't like? Will you again immediately discredit him? Will you call the Attorney General? Will you call on the Attorney General? Knowing he is only interested in criminal matters, not matters that go against the county handbook? Folks, if you can't tell, I'm frustrated. My personal belief is, our county attorney resigned based on his training, education, and experience. And once he was exposed to the actions of the board, he knew he could no longer in good conscience remain employed here, and would be complicit in those acts as well if he saved. And he wasn't willing to risk his license on your actions. And that's my personal opinion. I don't want a county attorney with one ounce less integrity than Mr. Lachney. Nor do I want an attorney who was willing to come work for us if you are not willing to follow the county handbook, state code, and any other appropriate sets of rules and regulations, nor should any of you. That being said, my belief is you, the Board of Supervisors of Palatine, need to do some serious soul searching, make some changes in how you treat each other on the stage each month. I don't expect all five of you to have a kumbaya moment and come together and hug in front of everyone. But I would like to see you stop taking pot shots at each other during meetings and demonstrate a genuine desire to at least be willing to work together for the betterment of Palatine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, this is David Anderson, 2366 Bellcrister, Palatine. I attended the September 26 Board of Supervisors meeting. At 6:30, the meeting started with the recognition of the contributions of Mount Sinai Baptist Church. It was a message of community, resiliency, and the power of the unit spirit. By 9:30, that message of goodness was trampled by the behavior displayed on the stage during the camp, comp, and class debate. I found it disrespectful, closed-minded, and dripping with contempt. I was so disturbed by the behavior on the stage that I walked out of the auditorium and watched the remainder of the meeting at home. It was bad. At 11:40, I finally saw something good that happened on the stage. Mr. Lachney resigned. Now, it wasn't good that he resigned. To the contrary, it's a loss for the county. But it was good for why he resigned. Because why he resigned restored my faith in public service. And it restored my faith that good things, even great things, can occur on that stage. It merely requires doing the right thing. In his resignation, Mr. Lachney demonstrated courage, integrity, and the value of trust. I was proud of him in that moment, and I remain proud of him today. I was proud to see an honorable act by an individual willing to humble himself for a greater purpose. I know it's a lesson we can all learn from. I urge you to reflect on your own behavior on September 26 and find your own lesson, one you can embrace and one you can humble yourself to. It's our best hope to move the county forward. I thank Mr. Lachney for his service. I wish him God's.
Thank you, sir.
Steve Barrow, 3492, Rich, Paul, and Jim. I heard someone's put out, y'all want to know what we wanted in the county attorney? As far as honesty, integrity, that was the law. Special state law, county law. I want somebody that cares about discounting, wanting anything. That is the most important thing. We may not agree with the man, or woman, but there you got people that are prepared. But we want somebody that can do the job, do it right. And, well, no, me and the last one didn't get along. But I have to give that man credit. He did the job to the T. What I want, or what people tell me they want, I'm dumb enough to get up, speak, people come to me. They want Tom Lachney back. They want a man of integrity. For nine years, he served this county and this board. Three of you, we all voted, all three of them speaking, up through the bull crap, is reason that man left. The dog question is integrity. His dealings with the law. Part of the mess, I've bettered my life in this county at a board meeting, as saying so. But it's a crying shame that man is gone. And another thing, live in Palatine County. You go hold a position like that, a position of authority, big pay, I would hope you go live in this county. Now, as far as what went on on that stage the other night, everybody knows it's a blank show. It's just the way it is. That's what we come to expect now. But I'm sorry, you take positions like y'all got, and I know they're no fun. You got people like me chewing on your butt raising hand on it. Now, I admit that. That's part of the job. If you can't take the heat, get it out of the kitchen. That's all I got to say. Mr. Lachney, God bless him, a man of pure integrity. I didn't agree with him. He's made some decisions. Hurt me, in my opinion, but he did what he thought was best for this county. So y'all, please consider that. Before y'all run another darn good man off. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Good afternoon. Brandon Crawton, 2219, lost note. I think for a county attorney, that certainly he needs to certify all the credentials of a lawyer, thorough in all his duties assigned by the Board of Supervisors. Honest, all his dealings with county issues. To happen and to have integrity in all his dealings with the county, and also his personal character. And he will not be swayed by pressure from the board. He be committed to serving the citizens of Palatine County. Be truthful in all the circumstances. No matter how it impacts his job. And I have to say, to be someone, just like Tom Lachney. That's what we need in the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Spel.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'm Mr. Tom Getchel. If you're trying, if you would like to speak up, we're ready to hear you. I think you're on mute right now. Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, Mr. Getchel, we hear you.
Yes, this is Tom Getchel, 19075, Founder's Noel Terrace. First, I'd like to echo the other speakers today so far. I've watched the recent board meetings and the performance and action of the board. All five members and the county administrator has been deplorable, far, far below unprofessional, and far beneath the interests of the citizens. Plus, the public debacle has cost them taxpayers money now, in time, and staff work, and now a county attorney is searched, and in the future for the abandonment of a comprehensive and legally defensive HR plan. The county attorney, who has served the county with honor and distinction for many years, did not ask for the review assignment. Gave the citizens and the board a well-documented legal review, which should be taken seriously, not passively kicked down the road. How deplorable that the county attorney resigns as a matter of principle because the elected board ignores the ramifications of his review that they asked for. And most shameful was the arrogant and condescending performance of the county administrator the other night. He is an administrator. If he sees the need to vary from the county HR and classification system that the taxpayers paid for, then there is no question he should seek specific guidance from the board and legal guidance from the attorney, not eviscerate the HR system on his own, and then be arrogant enough in public to call it a gotcha politics when he's caught. There is no gotcha or caughtcha if there's nothing to catch. Or if you seek clarification of rules and law before you act. That is what a competent administrator does, and that's what the county pays him for. Notwithstanding the county administrator's HR actions, and notwithstanding the county administrator's detailed report, the arrogant and condescending performance of the county administrator is more an issue here. His performance towards the elected board, towards the county attorney the other night in public, and towards the citizens that he's supposed to serve, that's grounds enough for severe action by the board. He is your and our employee. Instead, he's rewarded with a promotion and new benefits. This board needs to make amends among themselves. There's no need to go to the Attorney General for review of the county administrator's actions just the other night. It's condescending and arrogant action. The board needs to make amends among themselves, get control of the county administrator, and start acting in unison for the benefit of the citizens, rather than acting like this is some kind of playground game and having a county administrator look at you and say, "It was a gotcha game because he got caught." Please, start acting in the interest of the citizens and quit making this county a laughing stock. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. We got two emails, and the board did, and I'd like to read those into the public record.
Absolutely.
We're here with... First one is from Diane Wood, 3621 Branch Lake Court, Palatine. "As a citizen and taxpayer of Palatine County, it is beyond comprehension what I viewed on the last BOS meeting. Our county attorney resigning is and should be the final straw in the saga of corruption from the BOS and the county administrator. The county attorney and the HR director was tasked with providing information on the pay and class and compensation, and because their report did not coincide with two of the BOS, publicly chastised other members of the board. The vote was then decided by three to two without any discussion on retaining the county administrator. This was embarrassing to watch, and they accepted the resignation of the county attorney for absolutely no reason. First, our BOS needs to act like adults instead of ill-mannered children, and that's exactly what I told my supervisor, Mr. Byerley. After I said that they need to find common ground and work together, he and Carmack publicly berated two BOS in front of the public. Now, when reaching out to him, he ignores me after our help campaign point. I've never seen anything like this. And those three board members need to make things right and ask our county attorney to remain. Asking the public for an input on a new county attorney is ridiculous. Anything else is an inpropriety and embarrassment to our county for many obvious reasons." That's Wood. The next one is from, this is Teresa Bragg. "The fact that supervisors Carmack, McClung, and Byerley are so harshly attacked the results of Tom Lachney's investigation and his subsequent recommendation to terminate Smithers is loathsome. It indicates that they're not working for the best interest of Palatine County as a whole. They did not consider, they did not get serious consideration to the valid concerns revealed by the investigation. Rather, they chose to attack Lachney in an investigation line. I want to know why Carmack, McClung, and Byerley are so staunchly defending and propping up Ned Smith in the position. Are they somehow beholden to him, or is it the other way around? The fact that they waived the requirement of Palatine residency, quote, because he had a home elsewhere forty years, end quote, defies logic. Smithers knew the requirements when he applied for the job. Without him, he has no skin in the game. He drives into Palatine to work regardless of multiple expensive failures, errors, omissions, and decisions of questionable legality. At the expense of Palatine taxpayers, he leaves all in his rearview mirror at the end of the day. Granting him a raise for his negligent performance to date defies logic. The raise that Smithers granted to select few in a county is questionable at best as his unwavering defense of his egregious performance by Carmack, McClung, and Byerley. Their implausible defense of numerous failed endeavors by Smithers offices ranged from "it was someone else's fault" to "his termination would harm the county's ability for future hires", when in fact, the buck stops at Smithers for all actions taken by the administrator's office, period. Potentially illegal actions uncovered by Lachney's investigation have been similarly dismissed because other localities have done the same thing, or this is just a hit job. Rather than asking for input on the county attorney position, the Palatine Board of Supervisors should be asking Mr. Lachney, Tom Lachney, to remain and terminate the lawfully failed county administrator. If the BOS is generally interested in obtaining input on the attorney position, why schedule a meeting at 4:00 PM on a great portion of the county still at work and unable to attend? Why not a special meeting for input on the administrator's position now that details of the Lachney investigation have come out? I believe the answer is that Carmack, McClung, and Byerley don't want to hear it. And as a thirty-year resident of this county, I am hopeful that the taxpaying residents of Palatine will boot their self-serving butts out of office at the end of this term. That's Teresa Bragg. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, Mr. Bragg. Mr. Byerley? Did anyone else come into Zoom?
No additions to the, no raise names.
Dan, be the band around the way to the next couple.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Bragg, I'd like to speak. Let's do it under Board Comments. Here's a first name. Let's get on to doing the business. The new business was the authorization. This reason this meeting was called is for the authorization to advertise for the position of a county attorney. That was the purpose of this meeting. Authorization to advertise for the position of county attorney. That's what we want, the authorization. If anybody would like to make any comments on authorization, the advertising for the position of a county attorney.
What do you plan to advertise?
The ad that the HR manager created.
I pointed, can I ask Mr. Jimmy Nancy?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, no, sure.
I pointed out that that ad was not correct. It said that the county attorney works closely, would work closely with the county administrator. In fact, what our county attorney has been doing is documenting the problems that the county administrator has created. And he's done it time and time again. He has a legal opinion out there about the county administrator's authority and where he's abused. So they don't work closely together. They are, in fact, working at odds from each other. So we have some problems with the advertisement not representing what's really happening in Palatine County, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments?
I do want to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
I think what I'm about to say is going to affect this advertising for the position of the county attorney. I've also talked to my constituents and the people of Palatine the past couple of weeks. I have I've looked at everything. I've listened to people. I have enlightened myself on some things that sort of happened, shouldn't have happened because of that. I've prepared a statement. I'm going to read the statement, and I'd like to be not interrupted.
Is it just about?
Yes, it is. It will directly impact this. I've spoken, this is the time to listen. I've spoken to a lot of my constituents in the past few weeks. All of them have committed you and your work ethic and your long-term service to Palatine County, and they really want you to stay. That is a decision you have to make on yourself. I will support you either way. That decision is yours. Reaching to this point, I admit it's because of the actions and everything that's going on, I cannot continue to do my job without listening to the people of Palatine County. I'm the newest member of this board. I've been here, no less than a year. While I haven't said much in the past, I've observed a lot. As a board, we have been and continue to head in a direction that is not productive and that's extremely divisive. We have all participated in some form or another divisive, some form or another, and this needs to stop today. Lovers should have been prospered, prospered at our last meeting. This has gone too far. The core of our truth is that the citizens have lost trust in our county administrator, and I don't think he can get it back. All of our actions and antics have also caused the citizens to lose trust in this board. That is not okay with me, and it's the only way I see that we can fix this is to make a change. The board needs a reset, and we need to start taking full responsibility for actions occurring in this county. We are the ones at the top and responsible for the direction and leadership of Palatine. It ultimately falls on us. Contrary to what others believe, I do not feel all the blame falls at the feet of one man. However, I do not see a path forward unless we call for our county administrator's resignation. While I do not believe this action will magically solve the issues that have been presented over the past few months, I do believe it is what is best for Palatine County, and hopefully what is best to bring this board together as a team. Hopefully, one team to work together. I believe we need to bring in a strong interim county administrator who isn't afraid to lead Palatine and work with us to fix some of the mistakes and mishaps. I'm hoping this helps the county and this board start to heal, and that all of us sitting here give our next county administrator the support and tools he or she needs to do their job, starting with an updated pay and comp plan to work with. And interim county administrator will also allow the board to take its time to hire and find the absolute right fit for Palatine County and get it right this time. We really need some stability in this position. I've said that many times. I'm also recommending we hold stakeholder meetings, much like the school board did with the PCPS superintendent search, to gather citizen input about what they're looking for in our next county administrator. I'm hoping if we can do this together as a community, all of us will be more apt to support our county administrator, like I feel we should. This is the decision I made lightly. I'm not taking sides either way, and this does not reflect anything other than my love for Palatine and the citizens. And to get this board moving forward together, we needed someone to step up today, and I'm choosing to do that. I want to be clear. I'm doing what I feel is best for this board and Palatine County. Therefore, I hereby formally making a motion to call for Mr. Smith's immediate resignation and hire an interim county administrator to get us through this challenge at time.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that motion with a comment. I would like clarity on Mr. McClung's motion and I'll pause his comments. Very well said. I would add that, you know, the motion for his immediate resignation be with cause. That's my amendment to your motion.
Mr. Lachney, are you there? See you all then.
He is.
Now, how about now? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
I'm here.
I have a question for you. Procedural-wise, because that takes it out of the procedure that we would normally go. I don't under a special meeting with the authorization to advertise for the position, we're off of it according to what the bylaws state. Are we okay to go with that? Or do we need to stay as the bylaws state and keep this meeting specifically to the advertised business that was to be discussed in this meeting only?
Well, and it's sort of a tricky ass pulling all this up while this was going on. It's sort of tricky because it's it's a special meeting, not by state law. It doesn't meet the state law definition of a special meeting. It just meets the state law definition of a regular meeting. So the question becomes, is Mr. McClung's motion related to the, what was advertised on the agenda? I will defer to the majority of the board on that. I mean, it's certainly related back to what happened on September 26. But I think the majority of the board will have to decide, I mean, because it's technically a Robert's Rules question. I think it's related, but three of y'all can overrule me on that.
So the bylaws state, "Business that does not come within the purposes set forth in the call of the meeting shall not be transacted at any special meeting of the board unless unanimous agreement is given to consider additional items of business and all members are present." If that's the case, where all members are present and we give unanimous agreement to go outside of it, that should cover us in regards to the bylaws, correct?
Well, that fixes it completely either way. Exactly. Then procedure doesn't matter if everybody
Right.
was moving forward.
So in order to do that, do we need to have a motion that, or can we just do a head nod that we're all okay going outside of the parameters of what the special meeting was called for?
Well, technically, your parliamentarian, me, said it was germane. So technically, somebody would have to object and say, "I object that this is not germane. It's outside of what it was called for." So unless somebody acts to prevent it, it can go forward.
Okay. Mr. Chairman. So and I don't think you're getting, I don't think you're hearing anybody disagreeing at this point. To go back to the point of what this meeting was, the purpose of this meeting, to authorization to advertise for the position of the county attorney, that was the whole purpose of the meeting, and now we're off of that. And make sure that I'm clear with you. As long as we don't disagree, and you as the parliamentarian are stating that you feel it's germane to this topic, right?
I think it's germane based on this topic is a continuation of September 26, so I think it's related. Yes.
Okay. All right. So there's a motion on the floor. Mr. Chairman, we're not through talking about this. So there's a motion on the floor that states by Mr. McClung, District Two, to immediately call for the resignation of the county administrator with an amendment by Mr. Williams to state that the termination is with cause. um, state that the termination is with cause. Am I right, Mr. Williams? Is that what you?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Okay.
Um. Now, do you have something you'd like to say?
Yeah, yes, thank you. Uh, the question is, is it German, raises, is it germane?
He said it was.
He said it was. Okay, okay. And I believe it's germane because in fact, if uh this motion were to prevail, uh, then the possibility of having to advertise for a county attorney may go away. It may go away.
Amen, 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 it may go away.
Okay, so it is germane and there's a direct link in in my way of thinking so.
Yeah, if Mr. Laxney rescinds his resignation where he quit and he decides to come back um, after this motion, you know, that's a totally different scenario.
I understand it, but what I'm saying is they are linked.
Oh, the germane part of it is not a question, in my opinion, after Mr. Laxney, you know, says, I don't, in my um, so is there any disagreements in this? Not hearing any. I stated the motion. It's on the floor. There is a second. Let's do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Um, so, Mr. Chairman, sorry. Let me interrupt. Um, yeah, just so we don't have a the motion is requesting a resignation. Mr. Williams, his amendment is with cause, but I mean, if Mr. Smithers offers his resignation, that with cause would be a termination motion. So I I don't think the with cause really goes with the request for a resignation. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, the the with cause is is termination language. The motion is requesting a voluntary resignation. And so it would technically, I mean, Mr. Smith would basically have to say if he agreed to it, that I agree with cause, which doesn't make any sense. So so I think it's somewhat of a problematic motion on that, just adding the cause.
The amendment sort of is all contradictory to the motion, right?
Right. I think the amendment is a is an amendment if we were talking about a termination motion, but it's not a termination motion. It's a request for resignation motion.
Yeah, the motion is is a resignation. Right.
All right, Mr. Mr. Chairman, if I may, while we're calling this topic and we are discussing it, so I want to know from the county attorney with Mr. Smith's contract, if he resigns, what type of severance does he, is he entitled to? Because this is important.
It it depends on how many votes request his resignation. If you recall, the the severance was staggered, whether it was three, four or five votes. So if it's if it's three votes, the request is resignation, any any offers his, tenders his resignation, then it will nine months.
Now, this this is important. This is for the people that are watching this meeting.
Right, if it's.
What you're saying, a motion that would enable the county administrator, if there's, if I understand correctly, from what was amended at the seven twenty five meeting in his contract, if five people vote uh, to accept his resignation, then he would get, I believe, six months severance. Is that correct?
Six months if it's five votes, nine months if it's three. I think it's eight if it's four, yes.
All right. So the rhetorical question is why, as a board member, having observed everything that's happened over the last eight months, why, the reason we're here right now, even talking resignation, has been the performance of the county administrator where it has not met the bar of acceptable behavior or has been documented to the board in emails that I read on seven twenty five that he misrepresented Mr. Compton from the Department of Tax. The county attorney also sent us an email where he documented that the county administrator also misrepresented Mr. Compton again from the Department of Tax. I could go on and on. So the question is, do I want a resignation? Or do I want to fire him with cause? It's the latter. I don't think he's entitled to six months severance. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Whoa. Hold on, hold on.
Um. Okay, I I'm kind of processing what you just said. Okay, um, Mr. McClung, so.
I made the motion to ask for a reservation. I don't, I wouldn't support the cause. I made that motion, so I'm gonna stick with that motion. You finished? Yes, this comment.
Um, I would like to hear from Mr. Smith. I asked him for some comments on what is being proposed. I think it's only fair.
I I I would agree. Go ahead.
Sir Smith, would you care to have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, it's been a pleasure. It's been a pleasure working with Palatine citizens and and this this motion. If you, if it comes to request my resignation for the terms of contract, you know, I I would, I would agree with that. I mean, I would, I would attend to my resignation based on your request. Um, it's been a pleasure. Nothing has been done ever that I thought was uh, wasn't designed to enhance our operations here in Palatine from day one to to now. It's been my pleasure. If the board decides to go that direction, uh, for the terms of contract, I would accept it.
Um, Mr. Laxton?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the motion that's on the floor and then is there's an amendment to that motion. Um. I'm trying to remember your tutoring on the the Robert's rules. I don't know if, can Mr. Williams withdraw that? I don't know that he wants to withdraw, uh, but the motion is in conflict listening to you and what you're saying.
Yeah, I I don't think it was a proper amendment. I I don't, I don't think it's an amendment. So it's, in in my opinion, it's really there.
Okay. So Mr. Williams just said he was withdrawing. So having that withdrawn, then the motion by Mr. McClung is that his motion is to have the county administrator tender his resignation immediately uh, upon board approval of that motion. Am I right, Mr. McClung?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, does that, does that motion now that Mr. Williams has withdrawn his amendment and we've restated that, does that require a second, Mr. Laxton?
No.
Okay, yes, Mr. Williams.
I'll introduce another amendment. Substituting the word fire for resignation and adding the word cause at the end of the statement.
Okay, so now, um, you can hear this, right, Tom?
Yeah, and and just for everybody's information, I got to leave in about ten minutes. I have another meeting to go to, but yes, I can hear it.
Okay, I do too. Um, the uh so the amendment now is to, the 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 motion is to ask for Mr. Smith's resignation with an amendment that states um, it's going to be amended to be terminated, termination with cause. Are we okay with that?
Yeah, you would have, yeah, you'd have to vote on Mr. Williams's motion at first and then back, depending on what happened, then the main motion, yes.
Correct. So what we're really voting on is Mr. Williams's motion that it goes with termination and cause, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, replacing the word resignation and adding the word cause.
And the word termination and.
Right, correct.
Okay, are we all clear on that?
No, sir.
We're not.
Yeah, I'm not either.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, okay, so we vote on Mr. Williams's motion. Now, correct. If that passes, is it finished?
No.
No. All that does is amend Mr. McClung's motion.
Okay, so if so if we pass Mr. Williams's motion, then what happens?
Now, Mr. McClung's motion has become instead of a motion.
You go back, you go back. We can't hear him. Tom, he asked a question. Can you repeat your answer?
Yeah, i- if Mr. Williams's amendment succeeds, then the main motion, which is currently Mr. McClung's motion, the main motion is amended that the word resignation is replaced with termination and the word for or the phrase for cause is added. If it if it succeeds, then the main motion becomes termination for cause. If it fails, then the main motion remains Mr. McClung's motion to request his resignation.
Okay, so
Mr. Riley, help me with this. If Mr. Williams's motion fails, then it goes back to the original motion and we vote on that.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So let's do a roll call.
Chairman, one last question.
Yeah, you have to end this one.
What would happen if we withdrew, we basically asked, we didn't take board action, Mr. Smith voluntarily resigned. Could could something like that happen? And what would that look like?
Well, I'm not Mr. Smith's lawyer.
I'm sorry?
I said, I'm not Mr. Smith's attorney, but I think he's going to want to vote because his his agreement is tied to either firing or requested resignation.
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So what we're going to vote on right now is Mr. Williams amendment that states you replace the word resignation with termination and you add the word cause with cause to that. Everybody got that? Roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. McClung?
Nay.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Ms. Carmack?
No.
Ms. Bow.
Ms. Bow.
Nay. So now we go to the original motion, right, Tom?
Correct. And now we're back to Mr. McClung's motion, yes.
Which is, um.
Request his resignation.
Request Mr. Smith's um resignation immediately. Correct?
Right.
And that's it. You with me, Tom?
I'm, yes, sir. It was correct, so I didn't say.
Okay, all right, good. Let's have a roll call vote.
Well, I'd like to, I had a comment, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
What you're seeing right now is your tax money. Now, just recently, as July, the county administrator was given a nine percent increase, I believe, and I'm going to ask the county attorney to weigh in, increasing his salary to a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, I believe. So now if all of us vote, see, this is the trap that's laid. All of us vote, he gets six months. But if I say no, you know, I don't think he deserves that and I don't think the taxpayer should be on the line for six months of salary of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Again, that's real money. That's not including other things he gives. I'm going to ask the county attorney to calculate exactly what this golden parachute looks like. That was um, given as part of his amended contract back on seven twenty five when he got the bonus. When the clause was removed to take him the requirement of living in the county, there was also another amendment that did the staggered voting that's before us today. I've never seen that before that night. So now it's here before us. And so I vote you know, for not giving him his severance package. That's basically what it's meant to, you know, voting for the resignation. He gets a greater package than what he would be getting if all five of us went along with it. I'm going to tell you right now, I can't go along with giving him one cent. Okay, now that's going to mean, I realize giving him a greater severance package, but I'm not going on record voting for wrongdoing and supporting it with your tax dollars. Mr. Laxton, do you have what the total dollar amount would be?
No, yeah, sir, I have no idea. I I
But if I'm correct.
And benefits and VRS, I don't, I don't have the numbers.
Skip. Can I ask the HR manager for an approximation?
For nine months, it would be a hundred forty two, five hundred.
For nine months? It's a lot of money, folks.
How much is it for six months? How much?
Ninety five, that's just salary.
Is it one forty two, five, just salary to? And then, um, if you're in the eight months? Mr. Chairman, the contract is six, seven, eight. Six, seven, seven.
Yeah.
Seven months, seven months and eight months. So give us the correct numbers again, now, as long.
Seven months would be one ten, eight thirty three.
Eight months.
One twenty six, six, six.
Any other comments?
So if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Melissa, if you would give me those numbers again, if it's nine months, it's what?
There is no, there is one.
I mean, excuse me, eight months?
One twenty six. Seven.
One twenty six, Melissa.
One twenty six, six, six.
Okay, and seven months is what?
Seven months, one ten, eight thirty three.
Hmm, thanks, guys.
Okay, so once again, it's your tax dollars. This is our money. And it was a reason the contract was amended back on seven twenty five when the county attorney got a nine percent increase. And here we are today just a couple of months later and we're having this staggered vote being talked about among ourselves because we're not firing him as he should be. Instead, we are getting a resignation and we're giving him a severance package. I can't think of anything more wrong. I probably can. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, roll call vote. Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
I have the same kind of problems that Mr. Williams had. Um, I've been voted down in terms of the cause eliminated any severance package.
What's your vote, Mr. Cox?
Please, I will finish when I'm ready.
We're voting. We've already finished talking.
I have not finished talking, sir.
Well, you're out of the time.
No, I have no limit on the time I can talk.
I know, you're the expert. Go ahead.
Thank you. All you're doing is delaying this.
I'm delaying, I'm waiting on a vote.
Yes, we are going to vote. Thank you. Um, but I think it's in the best interest of this county. Um, Smith, we're back to Anarico. I'm going to support this.
This comment?
Um, a quick comment. Uh, two years in and here we are, getting rid of yet another county administrator. Um. Unfortunately, I see where this is going. It's nothing short of a political hit drop, but um, I'll vote aye.
Mr. Bow. Ah. The motion carries. I didn't hear yours, Mr. Jackson. You said aye, I think there you said. Okay, so there's motion carried forward. Um, next up, public comment period. Anyone in the public wants to speak?
We didn't, we didn't finish the reason we were here. Do you want, I just, we need, we, other than brushing, we need to talk about.
With, you're talking about the, the reason we were here was for the advertising of the position of the county attorney.
We have not, we have not finished. We haven't, haven't said anything about that.
Okay, do you want to ask Mr. Laxley if he wants to stay or if he wants to continue?
I will be happy, I will be happy to with him, talk to us after he's had a chance to think about it.
Okay.
Yeah, my sincere apologies, but I have got to run, so sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'm on.
Sure, Mr. Cox, Mr. Williams.
This vote does nothing, in my way of thinking, to give Mr. Laxton any confidence about continuing in his capacity as the county attorney. Because his report was rejected by the majority of this board. Well, it's changed. And so you'll know and it'll be perfect for everyone, the county attorney works for the board. We're his clients. Okay? Some people get confused and they think, well, the county attorney, you know, he works underneath the county administrator. That's not the case. He's one of two of our direct highlights. So going back to the comments and public. Comment that were made by the different individuals here in the room and that called in. That night, we had a report. From the county attorney. That pointed to the wrongdoing, the various violations of policy, procedure, even the Code of Virginia. Because again, supplements were given. Inside the Code of Virginia to constitutional officers with their board approval. All these things he documented. Leages of information, documentation. And yet, the accuracy, the integrity of his report was called into question. But nobody during that meeting said the first time, let's go over here to page four of the report, right here where Mr. Latchney. Lays out what happened here with this particular position. Nobody contested any of that. So for Mr. Latch, I believe to stay. It would require, I believe, a vote by this board. Saying that we affirm the accuracy and the integrity of that report that he presented to us. In conjunction with HR manager. Because without that, I I can't say why he would have any confidence coming back and serve his board. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, is there any comments about authorizing to advertise for the position of the county attorney?
I would like those to defer that.
Defer to win, Mr. Cox.
Our regular meeting.
Um, the twenty sixth is in, where is? Twenty fourth. Defer to the twenty fourth. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Defer. Now we'll open up the public comments period.
Fran Carlton, one nine Ross Road. Mr. McClung, Bravo for you. Really, your approval rating, it's gonna go up one hundred percent if you chose to fix this mess. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, my, um, comments that I mentioned earlier, we started off the meeting, I, um. Said I was proud of what Mr. Latch did on September twenty sixth. And I'm proud of what Mr. McClung did here today. Um, clearly, it wasn't an easy thing to do. Um, but you can tell he he had a lot of self-reflection. Uh, and he was open-minded. And those are, those are great things, and uh, thank you, sir, link, uh, circle county well. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Stephen Barrow, third, four ninety two, Richard Brown, Palatane. Well. That was the best. Yeah, maybe. Person best. Brian Shane. Mr. McClung, thank you for. Getting involved. Brian Shane came, took this long to get to this point. Numerous opportunities. Well, I gotta say, it's Brian Shane took it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. If anyone on Zoom, Mr. Chairman, Zoom is clear, Mr. Chairman. We're closing for the comment period. Mr. Latch is gone, right? If you have any comments. Mr. Smith, county administrator.
It's been my pleasure, uh, Lord and citizens of Palatane, thank you.
Board comments. Here in any. Journey.